So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and once again, it is my great pleasure to welcome everyone to this virtual Winchester City Council meeting of the West of Waterlooville Forum. The time is 6pm on Tuesday, the 2nd of November. My name is councillor Angela Clare, chairperson of the forum. Again, may I remind you of a few housekeeping rules to run through. First of all, please, may I ask everyone present in this virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted and your camera is turned off whilst you are not addressing the meeting, as this will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. Please, may I also advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website, and a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel and after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting's details, where the recording will remain thereafter. Members and officers, where appropriate for each item, could you please indicate that you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or explanation by raising your hand using the hand icon on your screen, and I will invite you to then speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn, therefore, please, I would encourage all members to keep your contributions as clear and as concise as possible, please. And finally, members, if anyone wishes to leave the meeting at any point, could you please make themselves known to me by raising your hand, and I will announce to the meeting that you are to leave. And so, please, may I now ask the Democratic Service Officer to undertake a roll call of members of the forum to confirm who is present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Members, if I can, please ask you to unmute your microphone and confirm your attendance when I call your name. So Winchester City Council members, councillor Clare.
Yep, present.
Councillor Brook.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, councillor Brook. Councillor Cutler. I haven't got councillor Cutler online, actually, so I'm not sure he is present, so I move on. Councillor Reed.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you, councillor Reed. And moving on to Havant Borough Council members, so councillor Meale.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Jenner. I've not seen councillor Jenner online, but, so I'm not sure if he is present yet, but maybe he'll join later. Councillor Wade.
Yes, I'm here, I'm good.
Thank you. Moving on to Hampshire County Council's representatives, that's councillor Hughes.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. And councillor Stalard.
Yes, hello, everyone, good evening.
Thank you. And the parish council of Newlands representatives is councillor Berry.
Good evening.
Thank you. And councillor Crichton.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clare. Clare, before you confirm the names of the officers present this evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm so sorry to inform you that Julie Pinnock is very unwell at this present time, but we do have Simon Finch with us this evening and Rose Lister. But please, could I ask you to bear with us, because if any questions come up that we're not sure which are the ones that Julie might have answered, please, may I ask you that we will get back to you offline and email you all with the appropriate answers. I'm sorry, but she's not feeling very great at the moment. So Clare, may I go back to you now? Thank you.
Of course, Chairman. So I'm just going to read out the names of the officers that are present tonight. So I have Simon Finch, who's the Corporate Head of Regulatory. Dawn Ady, who's the Strategic Director for Winchester City Council. Steve Lincoln, who's the Service Lead for Community for Winchester City Council. Rose Lister, who's the Principal Planning Officer for Winchester City Council. From Havant Borough Council, I have Katie Bone, the Community Officer, and Steve Weaver, the Development Manager. Also present, I have Jenny Upsteele, who's the Community Development Manager for Granger PLC. And in addition, we have attendance at the meeting from the following representatives from Blaw Homes and the project team. So I have Rebecca Fentrip, Chris Hebden and Steve Hoakes. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have Gary Rider or Colin Wood?
Unfortunately, no, they are not present tonight, so we have the three reps I've just given, that's his person.
Appreciate it. So, after that, ladies and gentlemen, we're now move to the agenda. Item one, apologies and deputy members, if any, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, apologies for absence have been received from councillor Robinson from Havant Borough Council, from Louise Weaver, the Community Infrastructure Officer from Havant Borough Council, and as you said, from Julie Pinnock, the Service Lead for Built Environment. Thank you.
Item two, if there are any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business to be transacted, please, could you use the chat function now to indicate, and I will invite you to speak. So I see, I saw a hand.
Yes, we have, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Wade.
Yes, hello, I'm the councillor from Havant, my name wasn't mentioned when you were at Havant people.
Oh, slap our wrists, sir.
Apologies, Mr councillor Wade.
Sorry, sorry, councillor Wade, apologies. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Just in the declaration of interest, I sit on the Winchester City Council Planning Committee, and therefore will listen to the presentation with great interest, but probably will leave any questions to the point when it comes before the Joint Planning Committee.
Okay, thank you, councillor Reed, appreciated. Who else have I got there? There's a raised hand. Councillor Crichton?
Councillor Hughes.
Oh, councillor Hughes, I apologise. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. In light of the declaration of interest by councillor Reed, I should declare likewise, I am a member of the Havant Borough Council Planning Committee, and I do sit on the Joint Planning Committee, so should this application come before that body, I may be one of those people being asked to deliberate. Therefore, again, I will sit to a washing booth this evening and won't ask any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, sir. I've dropped my papers, give me two seconds, thank you. Right, anybody else? No, I can't see anybody. So I'm moving on to agenda item three, minutes of the previous meeting, which are on pages seven to 14 of the agenda pack. It is recommended that the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 8th of July 2021 be approved as a true and accurate record, should no member object. If you do object, or you have a problem, objection, could you please raise your hand, and we will see what your objection is? Anybody? I can't see any, Clare, I think I'm correct in saying that.
No, that's right, Chairman, no hands.
Okay, so I recommend that these minutes are an accurate record.
Agreed.
Thank you so much. Agenda item for public participation.
Sorry, sorry, Chair, councillor Crichton's just raised his hand.
Oh, sorry councillor Crichton, after you, sir, thank you.
Just on a procedural matter, at what point do you want matters arising from the minutes of the last meeting being used?
You can take them now, if you like, councillor Crichton, if you have any matters, I will take them now, sir.
Fine, thank you. There are three matters that I want to raise. One, councillor Hughes may be able to give further information, but as you'll be aware, the matter of the adoption of the open space in the Havant Park of Wellington Park was outstanding. I did have a call from the officer concerned a couple of weeks ago to apologise, he'd been ill, and he's passed the matter to a colleague, but I've been assured that that process is now in hand. Perhaps councillor Hughes might be able to confirm either that the process of adoption has started, hopefully has been completed, or has he had some updates on it?
Thank you, Chair. My update to the Chair was the voicemail message you left on my phone, David, intimated that you'd have contact with Havant Borough Council and the process was about to commence. I was unaware as to whether there'd been any stalling of that process, however, I'm very happy to check, my understanding is that they've acknowledged the fact it's been slow and hopefully is going to accelerate now that they have the additional personnel in place, so hopefully we will see a resolution sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
All right, David, happy.
The second is matter for the planners, there are two applications outstanding for the town park and for the sports pavilion, and these have been pending for over a year. I understand they were working, waiting for further information, and that all of that has now been received. Can I therefore request that we ask for a further meeting of the Joint Planning Committee at the earliest opportunity, because work needs to start on these as soon as is practical?
David, could I come back to you on that later?
Yep, fine, just wanted to flag it as an issue.
Is that all right, David?
Yes, no problem, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciated.
The final one on this is that, as you will aware from the minutes, an issue was raised in relation to split policing within the development, in that the Havant Park is policed out of Waterlooville and the Winchester Park out of Bishop's Walston. We therefore raised a question with the new police and crime commissioner as to whether it would be possible to have it under a single heading, as there are issues at the moment where residents are not quite sure where to report. However, the response we have had is that there is no intention of changing this, and I did have a communication, which I've got to follow up from the inspector, new inspector at Waterlooville. I would just simply note that this is still an ongoing issue. The problem that we had with a number of things that have risen in the Winchester Park is that without any criticism of the Bishop's Walston station, it's a long way away, response times are not particularly quick, and they don't have a particularly large number of officers there. So this is a matter which we will pursue again in the future as the development increases, given that we have about another 15 years of development to follow.
David, under my heading as Communities and Wellbeing now at Winchester, this kind of comes under me, so can you leave that with me, please, David?
Glad to do so.
I will delve into it for you, sir, and get back to you.
Thank you. The only other point, yeah, the only other point actually, just as I noticed, is the fact that the work on the Taylor Wintie side is proceeding slowly. I haven't had an update from Kevin Mitchell recently, that it's, I understand it's still the intention to get the spine road adopted as soon as the remedial work that's been agreed with Winchester's completed. Whether it will be by the end of the year or immediately afterwards, we don't know, but it is in progress.
Okay, David.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah, appreciated, thank you so much. So if there are no more queries, I will move on to item four, we do not have any public participation this evening, so I'm going straight into item business, agenda item five, a Blaw Homes update on five phase 3B and 5A of the West of Waterlooville. So Steve, are you kicking off for us with this this evening, please, sir?
Yeah, thank you very much councillor Clare, and good evening to you and fellow councillors and officers. First of all, just to express our thanks for letting us present this evening and meet with you. I know we've had some initial meetings with some of you in your role as ward members, immediate ward members and neighbouring ward members, but we value the opportunity to meet with you this evening. As I say, I've got my, obviously on the meeting this evening, you have Rebecca from Blaw Homes and Chris Hebden. What we plan to do is just give you a very brief presentation and overview of the proposals by Blaw Homes, and Rebecca will talk through that shortly in terms of the presentation that we prepared for you. And we're also happy to take questions and any feedback throughout or at the end of the presentation. We'll also give you some context in terms of the, obviously a little bit more about the project background, which most of you will probably be familiar with anyway, but importantly, just talking to you about the Blaw Homes proposals and our plans to update stakeholders and the community, obviously, and fellow councillors as the proposals progress. Rebecca.
Yes, thank you, Steve, and I'd echo what Steve has said, thank you very much for having us this evening and allowing us this really valuable opportunity to present to you our proposals for two parcels in the major development area known as West of Waterlooville. I'm just going to, if the IT allows me, bring up the presentation, and then I can chat you through it. Bear with me. Sharing for everybody on screen.
That's fine, thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. So again, thank you very much. I thought it would be worth just having a chat through, for those of you that don't know much about us as an organisation, a little bit about who are Blaw and what we try to achieve in terms of our overall approach. We are the largest privately owned house builder, John Blaw still owns the business and is very much involved in the day to day running of the business, and for him, it's all about quality. So we're very much about the quality of our homes, the places we create, and we take great pride in the developments that we create across our region. We operate from eight regions in total across the whole of England. We operate, Chris and I, from the southern region, that's based in Newbury, and we cover as a core patch Hampshire, Berkshire, Oxfordshire, we go down towards Dorset, towards Chichester as well, so quite a wide ranging patch, but Hampshire and Berkshire is really a core area for us, so we're delighted to have been successful on these two particular parcels in this important major development area for these two, for the district councils. We build as a business about 4,000 homes every year. As a region, we delivered about 550 last year, so we had a very successful year despite the pandemic, and we continue to continue with that production in earnest. That's what we're about, is creating those lovely places and that absolute sense of character that we hope our purchasers enjoy. We're a five star builder, that's something we hold dear, and it's a high bar to achieve and continue to achieve, because it's based on our customer satisfaction surveys, so it's a rolling process, and we've achieved that, I think, for the last three years successively, and we strive to keep that up. We're also a competent builder, so we take our building approach very seriously in terms of noise and disruption to residents, because we appreciate with building comes some disruption, unfortunately, to existing residents, and we try to minimise that. But ultimately, we're all about reputation, our relationships and engaging with communities, so we're delighted to be here this evening to engage with you as stakeholders, and we'll continue that engagement throughout the reserve matters process, and that really is central to our whole ethos as a developer. So in terms of this actual specifics of the development, you'll be more familiar with this than I. We have an established outline planning consent on the land, major development area known as West of Waterlooville. The consent was granted originally back in 2012 now, so some time ago, and as part of that consent, this established a number of principles and a number of key documents were approved under that outline process. This include a master plan, a design code as well, which was subsequently approved, an environmental statement, as well as other key documents. And critically, condition three of that consent requires that we adhere to those documents, so they ultimately set the core framework, which we all need to adhere to. And I think that's quite critical, so we all understand the core design principles and quality that we're aspiring to achieve. So essentially, we're working within this established framework, and that ultimately is in accordance with the approved design code and wider documentation. So just a little bit of context, and this plan's come about from previous discussions we've held with stakeholders, just to give some clarity as to the location of the parcels that we're talking about. So we're looking at two parcels, if you can see my cursor, the first one of which is called 3B, known as Lakeland's on this plan. Just to give you a little bit of site orientation, the road that runs to the north of that parcel is known as Lacston Lees, and then the second parcel we're referencing is 3A, referenced as Woodlands Edge on this plan, and you have Newlands Avenue, a critical primary route running through from north to south. So hopefully that provides a little bit of context, and we can always come back to this plan if that would be helpful. Phase 3B is the first parcel, it's almost a T shape, and this critically is split. It's predominantly within Winchester City Council, but you can see that the district boundary to Havant runs through the parcel itself, so we're having to make duplicate applications to Havant and those to Winchester. This forms part of the wider phase three, for which David Wilson's currently building out around 300 units, and we'll be delivering, hopefully, the balance of that, which is circa 122 units, and that's 73 market homes and 49 affordable, and that's in accordance with the full 40% requirement of the outline consent. 10% of those will be M42 compliant, so that's accessible housing. The mix is predominantly two and three bedroom properties, and that's in accordance with the adopted policy, and this is a solely residential parcel, and it has quite a key relationship with the town park just to the south west of the parcel itself. This parcel is split across two character areas, known as the market town and the garden suburb, so we've evolved the layout accordingly to respond to those specific character areas. I should say that we've had some really helpful pre-app dialogue with both Winchester and Havant, and the layouts are evolving in response to that. But what the officers critically asked for is for us to try and front onto the area of the town parks, so we have more of a stronger front, street scene fronting onto that aspect. So this will evolve as we move forward towards the reserve matter submission. In terms of the type of properties that we'll probably look to bring forward, very traditional, that's what Blaw is about, we've looked carefully at the sort of products that we want to bring forward on this development, and we feel that this traditional housing, predominantly red brick with fine architectural, high quality detailing, would work very well in this location, and officers have responded positively to that to date. So this is just the flavour of the type of housing we're bringing forward on this parcel. The next parcel is known as 5A, and this is predominantly within Winchester City. This is 144 homes, again, part of a wider phase five, 86 of those have been market and 58 affordable, again, the full 40% requirement, and again, meeting the 10% adaptable units. Key features of this site are the plant row, this woodland edge, towards which we have to have a significant buffer, which we respect to within the new evolution of the layout, and again, we're proposing a mixture of two and three bedroom homes, they'll be the predominant properties on this particular layout, although we do have some character blocks, which would be stories to create focal points of interest within the development on the key edges. Again, this is solely residential, and this phase is entirely within the market town character area. It's probably worth saying that whilst we have two distinct character areas between 5A and 3B, there are similarities in terms of the actual materials. So again, these are the flavour of sort of properties that we're bringing forward on 5A. Again, that high quality detailing, predominantly the grey slate with the red brick with attractive features such as porches and attractive header details. And again, this is quite a traditional Blaw Homes approach, and we've carefully designed these to respond to the character areas that we have in question. So from a design point of view, that was really all I was going to say, and I'll probably hand back to Steve now, just to talk about next steps and our timings for the reserve matters submissions, but we can always take questions once Steve is finished.
Thank you, Rebecca. So as Rebecca mentioned, we've, in terms of the engagement relating to the reserve matters proposals, we obviously are aware that the, you know, the outline planning permissions exist, but we don't take any of that for granted, and Blaw are very minded to making sure that people are informed and updated, which is the most important thing in relation to the proposals that are coming forward. So what we plan to do is issue a community newsletter, the draft of that is already underway, and that will have some different contact mechanisms in there, email, three phone and also a mobile number, and that will come through to me and my team, and obviously I liaise very closely Rebecca, Chris and the team at Blaw to field any questions as well. So that newsletter will go out to obviously the immediate surrounding properties, other stakeholders such as the primary school, obviously the parish council and yourselves as local councillors, and make sure you receive a copy of that as well, because importantly, if you have any questions, then we can hopefully help you field those as well. Following the newsletter distribution, once the application goes in, there'll be some obviously further technical work, which is ongoing, which will support the proposals, so step back from the actual submission as such. The target date for submission is this month, November. I know Rebecca and the team are working very hard, and obviously there'll be some further dialogue with planning officers as well. And then we're hopefully subject to planning, of course, and the planning application processes for both local authorities, hoping to start on site in spring 2022.
So that was really all that we were going to say this evening. I suppose just one critical point that I haven't mentioned is that these are service parcels, so we are bolting into the infrastructure that Granger is already providing, and that really has set the framework and the form and layout of the layouts that I've put before you this evening. But I think Steve and I and Chris will welcome any questions that you might have.
If I could just come in, Rebecca and Steve, just to say a big thank you for coming along and doing the presentation. I don't disappear, because I'm now going to ask or invite forum members to ask any questions or make any comments, so members, could you please raise a hand to indicate your wish to address the meeting? Thank you.
Councillor Brook first, Chair.
You, councillor Brook, to you.
You, and thank you for the presentation. Sorry, my front door opened. I just have one question, you said predominantly two and three bedroom houses, I just wondered if you'll be providing us with a breakdown of how many two, how many three, how many four, if that's part of the handout that you're giving to local residents.
Yes, we will, thank you councillor Brook for that question. Yes, we will do, I mean, what we'll do is in the newsletter, we will explain a bit more about sort of exactly what the proposals comprise, just so that you as councillors are aware of that, and also, you know, local residents and any other stakeholders. And that, of course, will obviously be supported in terms of, you know, the application documents once they go in as well to the council, in terms of breakdowns and in terms of specific properties and things, but yeah, we want to provide as much information as possible, but whilst wanting to keep the document very succinct as well and informative.
All right, councillor Brook.
Yes, that's great, thank you. I will ask another question, but I'll let somebody else go first.
Okay. Clare, who's next?
It's councillor Meale.
Thank you councillor Meale.
Hi, thank you. I probably missed it completely on the maps, but obviously you've got the two areas where you're going to be building, and obviously to do that building, you need to get a lot of vehicles on there with all the bits and pieces. What are the access roads on to these sites?
Chris, is that something you can help with? I think we've got my technical colleague.
Just seeing, just seeing whether, just listening, see whether Chris is still there. I know he joined the call, didn't he?
Yeah, he is present, we've got him here with his microphone off, but.
I mean, ultimately, we'll have a construction and environmental management plan that I believe Granger would set the fundamental principles of, and we'd be coming in through the core routes that we would agree with Granger, but that's probably as much as I can answer without Chris being able to support me on the technical detail. I can always pick that up and take it away and come back to you, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, if you could, because I know a little while ago with.
Oh, sorry Rebecca about that.
Yeah, so basically, I know the other side of the town park where it's going, I know that there was some talk about creating a road in the head throw off of London Road, and again, I'm not too sure, I'm terrible with maps, and I was just wondering, is there going to be like a temporary road built for all like, you know, all the stuff going into the sites? So yeah, it would just be interesting to know how all the vehicles and everything is going to get on and off these two sites.
Hi, sorry, it's Jenny from Granger here, I can answer this for you. So the construction traffic route is actually to come in from the main roundabout on Horton Avenue, and then it goes along Horton Avenue down to Merrill's More, avoiding Granger Street, and then it will go down Newlands Avenue to serve the Woodlands Edge parcel, and then for Lark Fields, it will just continue straight down Plant Farm Crescent, so there'll be no access from the London Road at this point. The possible temporary access which you're referring to is for the Park View area down there, so that will come on a lot later on when that looks to be sold.
That's lovely, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brook, your hand is still raised, and I know you had another question, so Clare, if there's no one else, may I ask councillor Brook?
Yes, of course, nobody else at present.
Thank you.
My second question was, I'm aware that on the first build that you did up there, there was some great difficulty over one of the show homes and the resident who lived there. I was just seeking reassurance really regarding the lessons learnt over that, that we won't face the same issues on these phases. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there was an issue with one particular resident up there, and for us, we learn from our experiences and we work with our purchasers to resolve those as swiftly and promptly as we can and professionally, so yes, absolutely, we've learnt lessons, and we always do through our building, but we try and be open and upfront with our customers and resolve any issues that we have.
All right, councillor Brook.
We have Steve Lincoln.
Yes, thank you. I'm not entirely sure, I feel reassured by that response, but I thank you for the response nonetheless.
Thank you. Yes, Clare, sorry, carry on.
Steve Lincoln's had his hand raised.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Chad, just a really quick one, it was just in relation to sort of what
to sort of what you're referring to as the community newsletter. I suspect in terms of your stakeholders, you would do this anyway. But would you be able to make sure that gets shared with members of this forum? Just so that we can make sure the local ward members, but also the officers from the local authorities are aware of that. Just so we can, of a big site like this, it's quite hard just trying to coordinate and be aware of the bigger picture and all the communications going out. So it'd be great if you could do that. You can do that probably via sharing it with us at the city council and we can make sure that gets circulated.
Yeah, thank you Steve. I'll definitely make sure that you have a copy. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, in our sort of role on behalf of Bloor and working with Bloor, we're making sure that obviously the ward members, neighbouring ward members and members of the forum. But yeah, certainly we'll action that for you, no problems at all.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Lovely. Thank you Steve. Claire, anybody else?
No one else's hands have been raised Chair.
Okay, well then it leaves me to say a big thank you to Steve and Rebecca for coming along and doing the presentation. Very much appreciated because we would like to know what's going on, but it's Steve. Oh, hello councillor Reed. I see your hands raised there. Thank you.
Sorry Madam Chair, I didn't wish to interrupt you. It was there for when you'd finished. It basically was, this was the reason the forum was set up in the first place. So both authorities and all members had that one single presentation of future plans. And I think this is working extremely well. Very short in meeting, but face-to-face meetings are an awful lot better and probably more interesting as well. And thank Bloor's team for their presentation.
Yeah, thank you councillor Reed. I appreciate that comment. We all thought it was good that Bloor Homes or representatives should come along this evening to update us. And as councillor Reed, we like to be kept updated and know what's going on. And I really hope we can have a face-to-face meeting very soon. So, you know, sit around the table. But thank you so much. That was very much appreciated. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much councillor Claire. Thank you for, and if you need anything else after the meeting or you have any other questions that come up, please get in contact and we'd be happy to answer questions for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We certainly will. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much.
So I will move on to item six. Recent community development activities and any issues arising within the development. Who's going to kick us off on that please? I saw councillor Milne, did you raise your hand then?
It's councillor Creighton has his hand raised.
Oh, I apologize councillor Creighton. Yes, sir.
Thank you Chair. A couple of points that I want to raise, I think probably the appropriate point to do it. The first is in relation to the planning application sense of caverns for the additional buildings at Waterloo Park on all the the two takeaways, which will contribute significantly to the traffic on the Hambledon Road as there's only one exit from there. And add to that the decision made by the joint planning committee for the first two applications for the remaining portion of industrial land in Wellington Park, where the decision has been that the traffic should go up Donald Road onto the Hambledon Road. I know that it's a matter that you've been pursuing for some time, but this simply gives further weight to the fact that we do need a discussion with Hampshire Highways as soon as possible as the number of issues relating to the Hambledon Road are building up. And also with the new applications for additional traffic in and out of the development. And as Jenny Upstall has pointed out correctly, the route for the development, the real traffic will be from the main roundabout by Asda. That is going to become even more difficult to get through. So could I simply flag this? It's an ongoing issue. It's one you're aware of. But it's time to remind people that we still need to do something on that.
Okay David, I might come back on that. Could I just ask Steve Lincoln, who was going to click on just to give us an update? And Steve, I think you were coming in there. May I ask you? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I don't have any specific update myself. I was just going to say that I think Jenny on behalf of Granger and also Katie from Havenborough Council, we're both going to say just a little in terms of work that's been going on in terms of community development and community activity.
Can we take that first then please? Jenny, are you going first?
Yeah, happy to go first.
Nice to see you as always.
As always. So got quite a bit to report at this time. So kind of going back to July, we had our travel and community survey, which we sent out to all residents. So this was required by our travel plan Hampshire County Council. But we also tacked on a few community questions on there as well to help us out. The results were pretty much exactly what you'd expect. The majority of people travel by car. There's lots of cyclists on the site. I think the main kind of takeaways from that data was that we need to do a bit more better communication around the cycle routes on the site. So for example, there's a lot of shared pathways which people aren't aware of. The cyclists don't realise that they can actually go on the pegments. So I'm looking to work with Luke at Newlands Parish Council, who's the new communities warden there. He's a keen cyclist himself and hopefully he can help support that. We offered cycle vouchers and free bus passes as an incentive for completing this survey. And the main kind of key takeaway issues that we got from residents that we are working to address was obviously parking. As we all know, that is a massive issue on all new developments. So what we've done, as many of you are aware, is we have painted yellow lines already on Granger Street and down Newlands Avenue to the south. This has really helped with the car parking issues down there. There's been a few problems down on the southern end with Newlands Avenue with people obviously then going on to the side streets, which unfortunately was just bound to happen. And this is one of those issues that until more roads are built and more facilities are provided, it's just going to continue to happen unfortunately. And with things, obviously delays with Covid and Brexit, everything's been pushed back years. So it's a bit of a pain. Hopefully when the roads are adopted, this will obviously help a lot with the enforcement of people parking on yellow lines. You know, a few fines here and there will hopefully stop them. And also as part of the second phase of town park, we are delivering a visitor car park, which will help. Connecting up Merrill's More and Newlands Avenue will result in more options for traffic going around the site. So hopefully again, that'll help when it comes to things like school pickup time. So traffic calming, that was another issue. So we have installed temporary speed bumps along the main construction routes, which has caused people to slow down dramatically, which is excellent. We're looking at further options for some of the other areas such as Granger Street, where people do tend to speed down quite fast. So we're looking at things like potentially shortening the raised tabletop there. But obviously this is all done to HCC spec. So we have to go through them and make sure that they are happy with this and to adopt it. Those conversations are ongoing. And again, over time, the traffic flow will ultimately improve. It's just what can we do in the meantime to help support this? And the final sort of key point was timescales. So communicating better the timescales of the site, you know, what's going on. I'm hopeful that through the newsletters which we've launched over the past year, that's proving really beneficial. And also through social media. And again, there's because there's been such a kind of a stall on everything and we haven't really known what the dates are going to be because of Covid, the goalposts have just been moving, you know, ever further away. So it's been quite difficult to kind of give people proper concrete dates and things. But now that everything's moving forward, that's going to be less of an issue. And that's good. I've got a couple of raised hands. Do I want to answer them now?
Yeah, yeah. We're in full flow Jennifer, I think so. Councillor Reed and then I'll take councillor Brooke. So councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you. Hi Jenny. Just a quickie with regard to the town park parking. I presumably that's linked up with the new pavilion.
Yeah.
The decisions in.
Yeah, yeah, it's all as one.
That's lovely. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brooke.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Jenny for that update. I just had a question. It's all very Granger side focused. And we have the same parking issues, speeding down Diamondell Road issues on our Taylor Wimpy side. I just wondered if there's any plans to do anything on this side at all. Thank you.
I mean, I don't know who would answer that one. Manchester maybe?
Who would like to take that? I can't see anyone.
It's a Taylor Wimpy question, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm thinking it's not strictly a Taylor Wimpy question. If Winchester are taking these measures on the Granger side.
Winchester aren't taking measures. It's Granger.
Oh, sorry Granger. Sorry, my apologies Jenny. I got all confused then. My apologies because Steve passed over to you. I think you were specifically linked somehow.
No, 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 no.
My apologies Jenny, I got confused. But David separately, can I ask you to mute please? Because you've got a strange noise in the background.
Please councillor Creighton, if you can mute your microphone and your camera. I think you've got your hand raised there. So I think you might want to ask a question.
Have we dealt with this last question? Are we all right?
Then I shall go back and reschedule that Angela that reword it in that although yes, Granger are taking these actions. We do have the same issues our side. So that needs to be noted by the forum and perhaps picked up somewhere.
Lovely. You're a star. Thank you. David, yes sir.
I've got a couple of points I want to raise, which I have discussed with Jenny in relation to the deed of variation which has been raised for the Granger section 106 of the area. I know Rose Lister, I think is present this evening. And I refer to the points that she would has contributed to the planning application over the concern that.
David, is it possible to raise this after I've been through all my community update?
Yes, it will do if you want to do that.
Is that all right?
If you want to refer to the discussion you had, then you might want to do that. Can I also just mention at the moment, I'll come back to it if the meeting would prefer, is the ongoing issues over the absence of the section 106 implementation officer. And I'll bring us up when we're finished your presentation.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you David. Okay Jenny, off you go.
Sorry, I'll scooch through. So in August, we held a wildlife walk with our ecologist, which went down really, really well. And that was for residents just to walk around the River Wellington area and learn more about the ecology there. And then following on from that, we partnered up with Haven climate alliance in September for the Great Big Green Week. And we run a range, ran a range of activities, including park yoga, wildlife walks for families and also a separate one for adults because they don't often get the love that they deserve. We did reef making, candle making and the Wildlife Trust ran some meadow sweeps and pond dipping at Newlands Meadow. We delivered wildflower seeds to every household, encouraging them to plant wildflowers locally and help our bees. And whilst it was a really successful event and we got loads of positive feedback from it, on some of the events, there was a bit of a low turnout due to the weather. But that's obviously understandable. And I think generally it wasn't a week that we would necessarily have chosen because anything kind of family focused had to be done at the weekends because it wasn't a half term. And also the weather was a bit dodgy at the end of September. But still, it was really good and it was a great trial run to see how engaged people wanted to be in certain things in the area. Turns out very, which is great. The community planters that we have down on our Oakvale phase in the south, they ran their own sunflower competition for kids, which Newlands Parish Council very kindly provided some prizes for, which was wonderful. So that's flourishing down there, which is great. In terms of employment and skills, so we have partnered with Oaklands and Cowplaine Schools to support their careers programmes and that's through the Solent LEP. So I am now an enterprise advisor and through both Granger and also all of our contractors and working with the house builders, we will be supporting careers at those schools specifically because they have asked for help. So Portsmouth Beekeeping Society, they've moved into a compound on site. This is until the southern allotments are ready for them, which will be in a few years' time. And they have reported that they have had success transporting their new queens to the hives. So they are flourishing, which is great. So hopefully we'll have lots of honey next year. Up to the north again with Proxima Pond. So that's the sort of pond area that's just to the west of Proxima Park. We did a survey and there's lots of non-native carp that's present there. So it's basically just been dumped in there. So what we're looking to do next is to drain the pond, re-landscape the area, you know, smooth out the edges, make it nice and safe and remove all of the fish from there. There's a potential to reintroduce native species of fish and have it as a fishing pond if we want to later on. But for now, we're just going to kind of leave it as a nature area. And that work we anticipate will take place in the spring next year. We're also working with Proxima Park on some of the green space improvements in that area. Obviously they want to make it as wonderful as possible for their tenants. But that involves doing a lot of stuff on our land, which we're more than happy with. One of the options that we'd like to go for is a swift tower. So a nice home for swifts because they are in desperate need of them. In Newlands Meadow, we have installed a memorial bench for a local resident who sadly passed away a few years ago called Anthony Bessie. He used to fly his pet hawk in the meadow. His hawk was called Flash. So we've installed a bench that has a hawk carved into it. There's also several raptor boxes there, so owl nesting boxes and birds of prey nesting boxes, which we are going to dedicate to him. So we will install some interpretation boards up there explaining what these weird boxes on sticks are for. And a bit more about, you know, the nature in the area and also a bit of a dedication to ant. What else have we got here? So the Wildlife Trust, we're partnering up with them. Their big next push is community rewilding, which is something we're obviously already doing technically, which they're delighted with. And Bearwood Primary School in particular have an area of their site that they're looking to rewild. So we're hoping that might sort of kick off the project. And the Wildlife Trust obviously in future wants to get involved in lots of other things. So for example, when the allotments come on, they want to have a chat with the parish council and the people who take on the allotments and encourage them to maybe have little areas for wildflowers, for bees, that sort of thing. So just moving on to events. So this weekend, we ran some Halloween crafting sessions for kids, which went really, really well and was very cute. And that, yeah, really good turnout for that one. We've got our fireworks display tomorrow in town park, which really looking forward to. We're also running some self-defence classes for women in November, on the 15th and 29th of November. This is in response to the general feeling at the moment, which is, you know, that women are not safe. And given that it is getting darker and darker and, you know, we want people on site to feel as safe as possible. So we are running some of those self-defence classes for them. We're also partnering with the Wildlife Trust to run some Christmas craft sessions on Sunday, the 5th of December. And that's going to be wreaths and little kind of wood decorations. So that's for all ages. Residents have set up a motor club, Beerwood Motor Club, which is going to meet on the third Sunday of every month, which is fantastic. There's quite a lot of very nice cars on site. So it'd be good to see them all kind of bonding, petrol heads bonding together. Finally, this is a great win for me. I'm so proud of this one because it was such a ball to get. But Roamel have confirmed that they are going to put an additional post box on site. And it's going to be on the corner of Newlands Avenue and Row Rise. So basically in snap bang in the middle of the site. So that'll be great for Bloor as well because it's right near their new phases, which is brilliant. Yeah, so that's kind of all the community update from me. Sorry, it was a bit of a big one.
No, it's always appreciated. My goodness me, you cover literally everything. Well done you. So Jenny, I'm going to ask if there are any more questions for you. Any questions for Jenny please? Claire, anybody?
I have no hands up at the moment Chair.
Okay, right. So Jenny, thank you so much as always. And we look forward to seeing you again with your very colourful update. Well done. Keep up the good work. Steve, I see your hands raised. Thank you.
Councillor Creighton has his hand raised Chair.
Okay. Councillor Creighton, I'll take you first and then Steve then. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. But just go back to the points that I raised. But just go back to the points that I raised earlier on. Um just to remind the meeting that we have an ongoing concern about the lack of an implementation officer within the development. Um as you'll be aware, when we started the development some years ago, we had a full-time implementation officer. Um he was extremely effective, unfortunately left us. Um there was a second one appointed for a while. And then Chris Hughes took on the responsibility as part of his wider responsibilities. Uh and recently, we have had nobody overseeing the development. Now, I make it quite clear, this is not a criticism of the developer, it's a Granger, it's a name developer or the builders as such. Um but we are concerned, particularly at the parish council level, that there is nobody we can turn to as an independent person as we used to have. If there are issues that are coming up in relation to development. Um and where we are having to take action rather than to have somebody attending to us. There are, for example, the next phase in Proxima Park will be starting shortly. Andrew Derry has confirmed that the building for which they have planning permission next to Cooper's, the work will start. And as you're aware, we did have some major issues with the builders for the original part of Proxima Park. We've been assured that the firm that will be building that will be liaising with the parish council and the officers to make sure that we avoid those. But I would just like to put on record the fact that we do believe, given the length of time that this development still has to go, that the absence of an independent officer to monitor the development is a matter of concern. The second point which I raised earlier on is to deal with the deed of variation. Um now, if Rose Lister is present, I just wonder if she might like to make a comment. The document which has been sent to you effectively, to communities and wellbeing, raising concerns about one of the aspects of the deed of variation, which is the cutback in the community contribution and therefore the potential hours for one of our community officers. Given the amount of work that we still have to do in the development and developing the community plan and other activities. Um that is a matter of concern that we have. Um so I don't know if anybody wants to make a comment on it, whether Rose Lister should make a comment or you may, which is a sort of um other than that, can we simply note the fact that when the consideration of the deed of variation comes up before planning, the matter will be raised again.
Yep, David, hang on, I will ask Rose first. If you're there, Rose, can you comment on that for David?
Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
So in regard, the comments regarding the changes in the community officer have been considered. And we are in discussions with um with Granger on how to progress that. Um I, as I understand it, I'm getting an update in regards to that tomorrow morning. So I'll have to get back to you after that meeting. And Steve Lincoln was present at a previous meeting as well, who may be able to better update you.
Thank you, Rose. Um David, if we're here tomorrow then, can we pass on to you, sir, our findings or what's going on?
Uh yes indeed, thank you.
Thank you. And 106, Rose, can you contribute to that or anybody else, please?
Uh thank you Chair. Um yes, there are another number of issues that are being considered. And as I said, we're still in discussions, trying to get those sorted and trying to progress them as best we can.
Okay, may I then ask that when we have an outcome or another update, could you let David and the forum and myself know because obviously we're very interested?
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much. Uh stay there David, because Steve, I can see your hands raised. Did you want to come in on this, please?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Just wanted to sort of add that it's something I, I've since we've received the deed of variation request from Granger um and had a conversation with them just in terms of really clarifying what they were seeking to achieve and the reasons for it. I had, we've had some conversations involving also colleagues from um from Havant or representing Havant Borough Council. Um and obviously Katie's the community development worker and she's employed by Havant. Um I actually received an email just yesterday from um from Granger, just setting out clearly the the sort of view that they're taking on this. So what I committed to do when I spoke to them is that I'm going to send some information around to ward members, members of the forum, just setting out um the view that, that, or the conversations and the views that myself and colleagues from Havant have taken. Um our sort of perception on that. Um obviously, what you've heard is the amount of of sort of work in terms of that community role that Jenny and Granger are carrying out now. So clearly, we need to to make sure that, that, that what we do is coordinated with them. Um and and sort of David's point around the community plan. I think, you know, there's always community work that needs doing. All of our established communities have much work that still needs doing as well. Obviously, we need to have a look at to what extent the role um has, has achieved some of its aims when it was set out, which is about helping getting some of that social infrastructure established. Um so, so I'll be sending an email out now, I had that information from Granger, I'll be sending something out to, to ward members, members of the forums, sort of in the next, next few days, just setting out our take on that and just asking for their input. So we can then go back and feed in to feed our thoughts back to Granger ahead of the deed of variation going, going for a decision.
I appreciate it Steve, as you said, if you could make sure that David and all the members of the forum uh are aware of what's going on, that would be appreciated, thank you. Um councillor Milne, did you have your hand raised, please?
I did, yes. So this is, uh thank you. This is a question for Jennifer regarding for the stuff that you're doing. Um my concern is with the fireworks. The fireworks are in the town park, which are quite near a lot of residents. Do you know whether they're going to be quiet fireworks or we're going to have all the bangs? Um anybody who knows, I'm very concerned with regards animals and also there are humans who who don't like it. So do you know whether they're loud or if they're quiet ones?
Um yeah, of course. I mean, we had exactly the same concerns with it being kind of quite a densely wooded area and we know there's loads of wildlife. So when we spoke to the fireworks company, they're, they're using what's called medium report fireworks, so they are supposedly a lot, lot quieter. Because that's what we requested. So it will be really interesting to see actually how quiet they are when they go off. But yeah, hopefully, that's the plan.
That's wonderful, thank you, thank you.
That, that's a good question councillor Milne, because you know, this time of the year, you keep your animals in and keep your fingers crossed, so well done you. Um Claire, any more questions, please?
No, not this time Chair, no.
Hey, thank you. Uh thank you members, thank you Jenny once again. Um I'm going to move on now to item seven, discussing on infrastructure. And David, this is where you're
Oh, sorry, apologies, apologies Chair, I think Katie Bone may have something to add to the last item.
Evening Katie, let's over to you then.
Evening, oh, don't worry, I'll be very brief. Um I just wanted to give a quick update, so further litter picking events were held at the end of summer. Um they're all very well attended and I've held quite a few of these now. So I applied for funding so Newlands could have their own specific equipment, so we wouldn't have to keep borrowing Havant's equipment every single time. So the funding was approved and the litter picking equipment is now held on the community building with the hope that a regular group could use them, get access to them quickly. Um and hopefully in the future, people could, you know, sign them in and out as and when they want really. David, did you have a question about the litter picking?
No, simply if I might to thank you for that. Um just to make sure everybody who's involved, Luke, Peter's name has been mentioned already, who's our new amenities warden. Um and he's been a major benefit for the parish and for the area in terms of the enthusiasm he's brought. Um so our thanks to Katie for getting the funding for this. Um until we've got somewhere to store stuff, Luke is looking after it. Um but we are hoping that we can actually now get on with a much wider range of activities involving litter clearing. Um I should actually add incidentally also, if you're aware, that we have now had a link up with the Trashbusters organisation, which is a local volunteer group, we do a lot of clearing up right across the area. And we've now effectively, as I say, linked up with them and we will be working with them on a number of projects through the development, as they're doing elsewhere. So thanks to everybody concerned with them.
Thanks David.
So yeah, thank you. Um yes, I've been working with Luke and we're hoping to get some things set up. And as David mentioned, Trashbusters have been coming to the litter picking events and have subsequently have litter picked specific parts on the development because they came to previous events of ours. So yeah, really pleased with how that's going. Um moving on to the community plan, so work is continuing with that. So we've held several meetings now, we've, we've got a few residents committed to supporting the plan. We're obviously still seeking more residents to get involved. It's quite Beerwood heavy, we don't have many residents from Taylor Wimpy. So we're trying to get a good range of residents from the whole development. So we're using upcoming events and initiatives to engage with residents wherever we can to, you know, tell them about the plan. Um update them where we can and to hopefully get them involved and participating in however, however they see fit. Councillor Brooke?
Thank you Katie, and lovely to see you, I've not spoken to you in ages. Um I'm happy to support from the Taylor Wimpy side and come along and support you on that community piece. But also to say that I think you're probably hindered by things such as the fireworks that are happening for Granger that our side is completely excluded from. So I just think things like that will really hinder your ability to get cross-fertilisation. But I'm happy to join you from the Taylor Wimpy side.
Thank you, I really appreciate that Caroline. Um so yeah, our next meeting will take place on the 11th of November. Um I'll bring up the fireworks later on. Um but yeah, we'd really appreciate any input because we've got a few residents involved, but we definitely need more, so that would be great. Um but my next point was just to talk about partnership working. So it seems like a lot more partnership working is coming forwards. It seems like with Covid, a lot of community outreach had stopped. But I've been approached by quite a few businesses and churches recently who are looking to get involved in serving and supporting um the West of Waterlooville community, so that's really positive. So I've just been speaking to a few churches who would like to get involved in stuff locally. So hopefully lots will come from that. David?
If I could just add to that, as you'll be aware, the um the initial buildings in Proxima Park are starting to let fairly quickly now. And I've been in contact with one or two of the companies who are moving in and some of them are very keen to become involved in activities as well. So in addition to the groups that we've linked up with elsewhere, it will be useful to, probably through Andrew Derry, with the new companies moving in there who may wish to take part in some of the things they're doing.
Yeah, but that's really good to hear. As I said, yeah, quite a few businesses have approached me recently. So I don't know if there's suddenly a community push through businesses, I don't know, but I'm all for it. So yeah, it's some positive news coming forwards for the area. Um uh there was a section on, you know, issues arising on the development. So I just wanted to mention that quite a few residents have contacted me about, you know, vandalism or theft that had happened to their properties or around the area. So obviously, those have all been direct, been directed to 101. Um and then the other query that had been raised to me a lot, as you mentioned councillor Brooke, was the issues with um complaints from Wellington Park that they are being excluded from the fireworks event. So as we're trying to obviously have, make it an area for all and it is the MDA and the West of Waterlooville as a whole. A lot of them feel like it is a separate event for separate residents. So that's just an issue that wanted to be raised from, from a lot of residents. And that's all I have.
Uh Katie, thank you. Um please excuse my ignorance, but you said they've been excluded from the firework. Um how, why? Is that a silly question? You know, it seems very sad.
We've been told, sorry Katie to interfere, and the Wellington Park residents were told specifically that they weren't invited to the fireworks, it's for Granger residents only. Even though fireworks go up in the air and people can see them.
Yeah.
Um and that's been shared widely on Facebook and there's quite a lot of angst about it in the community, causing a lot of them and us.
Well, I, I agree, I feel sad that that's happening. Um I see Jenny's got her hand raised, perhaps she can come in on this, Jenny?
Yeah, so um we made the decision because we don't have all of Town Park completed yet. We don't know how many people would turn up. We don't have the facilities in place to cope if there were lots and lots and lots of people to suddenly turn up. It was just supposed to be a nice, small event for our residents on the Beerwood site because we are currently paying for it. Um however, going forwards, the idea is that this would be an event that could maybe continue on in perpetuity once the second half of Town Park is created and there'll be loads more space. Um I've been trying to get details from our landscaping consultants on exactly what the capacity would look like. Um so it's not a case of excluding just Wellington Park, we're excluding, you know, if you want to use that word, we're technically excluding everyone in Winchester and Waterlooville and the rest of the world as well. It's, it's just simply that this is a nice event that we're putting on for Granger residents who have purchased on the Beerwood site. Um because that is our land. And as much as we would love to have everyone coming, we can't necessarily fit them all in Town Park safely. Um it does come down to the old health and safety. However, as you say, they do go really high up in the air. So hopefully people, you know, if they want to stand outside, if they want to stand along the river or if they want to be on the roads, then that's absolutely fine, we're not going to stop that. Um we just wanted to make sure that from a safety perspective, Town Park, you know, the residents were safe, essentially. And unfortunately, it's been a case of we tried to do something nice and we're just getting lots of negative feedback from the Wellington Park side, which I think is a bit unfair and a bit unjustified. Because um you're not, just because you live nearby, doesn't mean you're automatically entitled to everything. And just because you're a part of Newlands Parish Council, doesn't mean you're automatically entitled to um to, to everything that we put on. And unfortunately, we have to draw the line somewhere. Um but as I say, we would love to have included everybody, it's not something that we've done kind of maliciously. It's just something that, you know, as I say, we had to draw the line somewhere. And going on in future, we deliberately tried to keep the fireworks costs down so that they can be continued in perpetuity.
Thank you Jenny, um I don't know what to say really. Um here you are councillor Brooke, it seems to me Jenny, I'm sorry, that it appears to be a bit them and us and I'm sorry if that sounds harsh. But councillor Brooke, go and stand in your front garden and watch the fireworks go up. No, no one's going to stop you.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think it's a real shame when Katie's worked really hard. I understand Jenny's point entirely about capacity and you have to draw a line somewhere. But Jenny, but Katie's worked really hard to try and build this community that goes across both sides. And things like this work, although it was supposed to be a good thing, really quickly destroys the work that Katie's tried really hard to do. So thank you councillor.
Okay, I will also add that this is the first time this has been raised to me. You know, people like Katie were well aware of our fireworks plans and this has not been raised prior to this. So I would appreciate it in future, you know, if there, if there's anticipation of these kind of issues, that they are raised so that we don't have to have these discussions.
Okay Jenny, point taken, thank you. Uh Katie and then Steve, because I'm sure Katie would like to come back on it and then Steve, thank you.
Yeah, I would do, thank you Chair. Um I was made aware of the fireworks event, Jenny is correct with that, but I wasn't made aware that it would only be Granger residents, Beerwood residents who would be able to attend that.
Okay, thank you Kate. Steve?
Um I didn't have my hand up Chair, but um
I saw it, I'm sure, but okay.
Okay, maybe it was an old one, but, but I suppose, I suppose I just wanted to just finish the last kind of conversation by saying, turning if you like back to the, the thing that was mentioned earlier around the deed of variation. I think what myself and colleagues from Havant, we need to square off in terms of our response to Granger on the kind of future community work that's funded. Um and the community worker role is really key for us, obviously, to look at this wider integration and sort of joined upness across the whole development and ensuring equity. So that would be a really key part of what we will be looking for, whatever, whatever the shape of that community work will be going forward. That's one of the key things that we as the local authorities need to make sure we, we protect. Thanks.
Agreed, thank you Steve. David?
Um I appreciate the fact that the rest of the developments over the next few years will be carried out by Granger. Most of it in Winchester, but parts of it will be in Havant as well. So I appreciate the work that's been done by the two councils. And of course, this is the reason for our existence of the forum in the first place. I do have a slight concern over the point that's been raised just now, over the us and them attitude, which unfortunately does creep in. It's inevitable in one sense in that the development has always been divided into two sections and split by Procter Park. So that Wellington Park is not only as Taylor Wimpy part and therefore not given the responsibility of making that, but is effectively detached. And I just want to make the point that it's something the parish council is well aware of. And we will try and look over the foreseeable future to see how we can make sure that it is an integrated development. So I'm sorry these issues have arisen. I do appreciate, and I did make the point about the fireworks. As Jenny said, it's a case of let no good deed go unpunished. This is unfortunate because I know the intentions are excellent. I do appreciate the fact that it's been done. I'm sorry that people have, on the Taylor Wimpy side, have felt we've been left out. I'm afraid it is going to be inevitable. It's the same way we've had requests for things like residents associations over the years. The area is large and is going to grow and therefore we have to try and find some way to make sure that we do consider it as a whole. I simply make that point. I don't think there's any other comments to be made at the moment here.
Yeah. Thanks David. And perhaps next year then we can sort it so we can all join in and be together for the firework display. But this year, going to be a little bit different by the look of it. I can't see any more hands raised. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to move on to item seven. Discussions on infrastructure. Claire, do we have a presentation or?
I'm not aware of any presentation on this one.
Who's going to pick on this one then please? Steve, thank you.
Again, not to leave Chair, I believe Jenny is going to just talk us through the next two items in terms of Granger's, Granger's ongoing work on site.
Okay, lovely. Jenny, over to you. Thank you.
Right, yeah. So in terms of the infrastructure, the Western Link Road, which is basically Merrill's Moore Avenue down the west side of the site. This has been moved forward to accommodate the new school site, which Hampshire County Council have requested. So this is now going to be, expected to be complete in spring 2024. The school is looking to open in September 2024. There will be an access road built for the school, for the construction traffic, and that will be from, just a bit from the south. So we are still dealing with a lot of the delays that have taken place due to Brexit. And we're still playing catch up from Covid. And as we all know, it's still very much present. With regard to Stakes Hill Roundabout, I don't have an update there. We're still awaiting the Hampshire County Council decision. I know Gary is heavily involved in that one. The Southern Access Junction, which is the Lady Bridge Roundabout. So we're hoping to submit a planning application for that before the end of the year. We have already shared plans with the Purbrook community, again with Gary councillor Hughes. And he's going to send that out in the newsletter. We are expecting work for that term, assuming all goes well, to commence in September 2022. And that work is obviously being done in conjunction with Hampshire County Council. Again, with Hampshire County Council, we are liaising with them on the future road adoption. So the main spine roads in particular, Granger Street, Horton Avenue and Newlands Avenue, those are all in the final stages. So we're just doing the last bits of snagging before we'll hopefully hand over for the end of 2022. We're fingers crossed that some of those might be sooner than that, depending on the maintenance periods. I mentioned already about the yellow lines and the positive feedback we've had from that. There's been some damage to quite a few of the paths through the nature reserve, which we are aware of and we have patched. But we are looking at a more permanent solution being introduced to that. That's damage mainly due to vehicles going across and causing gullies, which collecting surface water and causing big cracks, which is not ideal. And then finally, on Town Park Phase Two, we've started work on preparing the land for the cricket pitch there. So if you see sort of areas Harris fenced off and work taking place, that's what it's for. Now, that's not part of the current planning application that we're waiting approval on. That was a pre, a ye olde planning application for some works that's already been approved. Has anyone got any questions on that before I move on to the, the physical development side of things? David, you've got your hand up.
Going to say Jenny, David's raised his hand. David?
Yes, can I just ask Jenny, there was a second planning application, I believe, planned for the Lady Bridge Roundabout by county in relation to bus lanes. I don't know whether you or councillor Hughes can shed any light over whether the application that you're planning to put in will actually affect that, in fact may remove the need for it. Obviously, we would like the amount of work to be minimised rather than have two separate developments going on there. I just wonder if you can make any comment or if councillor Hughes can on behalf of the county.
I'm afraid I can't.
Sorry David, can you just start that first part again? I missed it.
All right, sorry. I was going to say, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that in addition to the planning application which Granger intend to put in for the redevelopment of the Lady Bridge Roundabout, that the highways themselves were looking to put in a separate planning application to improve the bus lane access at that roundabout. And I just wonder whether in fact the two have been brought together for a single development or whether in fact there is a need for the work that the county was planning to do. Obviously, as I said, it could be preferable if we don't have two separate sets of works going on. And I hadn't even mentioned the elephant in the room, which is the decision on the Actland proposal that we're still waiting for from the government.
Okay, thank you. Let me take you one at a time. I'm very grateful for Jenny for sharing the, the plans for the Lady Bridge Roundabout and the link to the Southern Access Road. That is going out in the Poiara newsletter, which is coming to the printers. She'll be out on the streets next week. You talked about the additional works, which are talking about the northern bus gateway. Now, if you come down the A3 down the London Road South, there is a south gateway where there's a set of traffic lights that as a bus approaches, they turn to red and it allows the bus to go straight through into Purbrook Village. There's a proposal under Transforming Cities funding to create a northern bus gateway at the southern end of the Lady Bridge Roundabout. The idea being it would improve the journey times between Caution and Hornedine by 20 seconds. That is, that is what it states in that, in the proposal. My contention is that if the moment the traffic stops northbound, all it will do is allow traffic coming out of currently Purble Keith Road and Lady Bridge Road to head north. Therefore, any advantage given to the bus will dissipate. And equally, if the bus goes into Purble Village and stops and a second elderly person gets on the bus, there is a 20 seconds gone. So therefore, my recommendation to Hampshire and shared by my fellow ward councillors and fellow county councillors is do not spend half a million pounds for 20 seconds of benefit, which will probably be lost anyway. We'd much rather that went to someone like Gospel and they built a whopping great, wonderful bus station at Gospel. So that is why we're trying to keep the two activities separate. I have asked Hampshire County Council on the results of the consultation. I've not had anything back on them. I think that covers everything. Oh, Akind, well, who knows with Akind? It was supposed to have been June. It was September now. I understand it's February next week to make a decision. All I do know is Hampshire Highways are not doing any research and works along the London Road through my division, Slant Ward, because of the upheaval caused by the installation of the Akind interconnector. I hope that answers all your questions.
Thanks councillor Hughes. Are you okay with that David?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And that's a point that councillor Hughes has made about the bus gateway. I think it's an extremely good one. So thanks for your help on that one.
Thank you sir. Like councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Just a clarification if I may. When the whole episode of the West of Waterloo was first mooted a long, long time ago, Lady Bridge Roundabout was in fact the major development route. However, that changed. Lady Bridge Roundabout itself lies outside of the development area of the forum and presumably the joint planning committee. So any application being put forward for that presumably will be granted on one authority, which in this case I think would be Havant. Am I correct in thinking that?
I think you might be actually. Is anybody, councillor Hughes, did you?
I'm pondering that question and I've got a feeling it may actually be Hampshire Highways just get the works approved. I've never been on a planning committee at Haven where we've looked specifically at highways matters. So, and I think, I mean, my discussions with Hampshire Highways cover many things, but please, and I, I always go back to the 2012 traffic assessment, which was generated as part of the MDA. And there were lots of junctions in that traffic assessment, assessment that fell out, fell outside of the development area. A really good example is Purbrook Way and College Road, which was a traffic light that were put in there. That is one of the, one of the locations within the traffic assessment. What we did over in Purbrook, with discussions with Hampshire Highways, was to ask them to do those works first before they considered doing any works at Stakes Hill Road, Stakes Road, Purbrook Way and Crucore Lane. The argument being if traffic has an excess, an egress from, from College Road, it may reduce some of the pressures on Crucore Lane. And that would appear to be borne out by what's happening. So, and I'm vehemently opposed to putting traffic lights up at that roundabout because the only source of congestion up there is mornings at school and evenings at school picking up and dropping off. Because if a car wants to turn right into Crucore College or Oaklands or St Peters, it just backs all the traffic up. Now, the roundabout gets blocked, you can winge your way over it because of curious drivers. You put traffic lights in there, everything will just stop. And what happened then is there will be rat runs. Rat runs down Moorlands Road, rat runs down Westbrook Grove and Elizabeth Road, taking us past junior school. So I've been vehemently against that for six years and I will continue to press that case. I hope that helps.
Yes, it does. I think once again, it's going to be Hampshire, as you quite rightly say, is probably going to make that decision and not either of the two planning up, nor the two planning authorities.
Oh, and to be fair councillor Reed, the Purbrook Way and College Road just happened because that was done by the section 106 miners through Granger, I believe, the mayor, I think. So therefore I would expect the same for the Southern Access Road. What's been really helpful this time is courtesy of Granger, we have the plans and we can share those plans and just free information to the residents. So by making them informed, rather than just aware, if they're being informed to get the detail in the newsletter, which is going out to three and a half thousand homes, they'll be aware of what's coming. And therefore there should be no surprises. And what most people don't like are surprises. So hopefully that will resolve that matter moving forward.
Yeah, thank you Chair.
I think a good answer there for you councillor Reed. Thank you councillor Hughes, appreciated. Any more questions please Claire?
No other hands raised Chair, not at this moment, no.
Okay, thank you all for that.
Sorry Chair.
Yeah.
Through you, we've had lots of discussion during this forum about the B2150 review and the concerns. The concerns raised and there's been lots of email traffic around. And I've, I've not spoken with my Hampshire colleague councillor Stalard on this, but it would appear that Hampshire Highways would get involved if they understand what the issues were. And they keep saying we're not being made aware of any of the issues. So if, if we wanted to take this forward, maybe at the next meeting, if somebody likes to prepare a draft letter to Hampshire Highways from the forum articulating our concerns in respect to the B2150 and be quite specific on what those concerns are, and let them come back and respond to us. And therefore we will start that discussion, be it electronic, with Hampshire Highways to see whether the concerns addressed by this forum are recognised, appreciated, acknowledged and whether they will take any work forward.
Yeah, councillor Hughes, I appreciate it because I have contacted on a few occasions Holly, is it Holly Drury at Hampshire?
That's, that's correct, yeah, Holly Drury.
And I, I know when I first contacted her, I think she was on maternity leave. But anyhow, she did come back because I did put queries to her and she came back and she said, as far as I'm concerned, we have no queries. It's, you know, we're happy with what's gone on. And I've emailed her on one or two occasions, but haven't really got anywhere sir. But I can see councillor Reed's coming in because I know he's very hot on this. So can I just bring him in first please? Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I did this in my last term of chairman of the forum. We asked for a meeting because we were concerned that the bits and pieces that were being done along the B2150 and the, the bid and piece at the time was the new crossing, which was put in by McDonald's. And we were concerned about an overall plan for the whole length from the Asda Roundabout through to the boundary with Winchester. We asked for a meeting looking at and stating that as we built out, the pressures would become greater, of which they are. So they are aware of the situation. What they seem somewhat reluctant to do is get together. I did attend the meeting with regard to the crossing. That was one of my last acts as chairman. But that was again, thanks to Anne, who was the county councillor, and the Haven part because she arranged for the meeting. It's up to the county councillors to be able to arrange those meetings. We as mere district councillors or borough councillors don't seem to have any weight when it comes to arranging meetings. It is up to our colleagues in Hampshire.
Thank you councillor Reed. Councillor Hughes, I appreciate what you're saying, but I have tried. But as councillor Reed said, we don't seem to kind of get around the table and discuss it. So.
So why don't we, next we need to put an agenda items to look at the B12150 issues. Let's discuss them. And if we are agreed that they are an issue, bearing in mind, and I'll take you back to that traffic assessment because there are outstanding works still to be conducted as part of the MDA from that traffic assessment. One of them I think is Sunny Me Drive, for example. There's supposed to be some activities there. So let's understand exactly what the traffic assessment said, work out what our concerns are. And if we want to put a letter from this forum, which of the two council councillors sit on it, let's do that. I have no issue. And I'm very happy to engage with Hampshire Highways, you know, they're probably sick to death for the sign, me banging on their door. But you know, something they get used to.
We'll take you up on that councillor Hughes. And yes, we will put it on the agenda next. Claire, if you could make a note of that please.
It's noted, yeah.
B2150 issues, but I'll just bring in David and then councillor Stalard. David first please.
To answer that point on the 2150, the additional traffic that's going to be generated from the industrial estate in Wellington Park also raises the longstanding question as to whether Sickle Way will remain open or closed. And therefore any discussion we have needs to include that because that has been an open issue for probably about five or six years. The other point I wanted to make about infrastructure, which was in relation to the planning applications I mentioned earlier for Waterloo Park, is that amongst the submissions that have been made there is effectively a reminder that under, there is a requirement under the section 106 agreement for that to provide foot and cycle access to what the old BAE site, the inverted as such, from Wellington Park. And as you know, this has been an ongoing issue for many years. Whether it's actually going to help to force a decision on it, I don't know. But I just remind you, it's been raised yet again in relation to that particular planning application.
Thank you David. Councillor Stalard, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Going back to the points made by councillor Hughes. Actually, even before your time councillor Hughes, there were murmurings about traffic and traffic flows on the B2150. And I did manage to get the engineers down and they did do an assessment from the Asda Roundabout up to what I call now the McDonald's Roundabout. They were, the outcome of that was that they were quite happy with things. There was not a traffic incident problem or record. And they were very, very happy. So that's sort of, that's where it stayed. But since that time, I get the feeling that there have been a few murmurings and, and people have independently, shall I say, tried to make contact with Hampshire Highways. And for example, I knew nothing at all about a meeting to do with the crossing on the B2150. And for example, I knew nothing at all about a meeting to do with the crossing on the B2150. I wasn't approached. I wasn't kept informed. And I have repeatedly asked people to tell me if they've got an issue with the B2150, but in general, they prefer to make their own inquiries. And as I think someone has said this evening, it's far better if those inquiries are done A on block and in partnership with one another. And also, if you make use of your county councillors, that's why we are here. So I think councillor Hughes is absolutely right. Rather than everybody individually complaining, put it on the agenda. Let's thrash out exactly what those issues are because I don't think Hampshire Highways really are clear in their own mind. Because I think over the years, small complaints have been coming from different quarters. Let's get together a case and then Gary and I can put something together and go in the full attack, as it were, at Hampshire Highways. We've got to learn to work together. And I think this is one case where we haven't. So I really am pleased. It is going to go on the agenda in a future meeting.
Thanks councillor Stalard. I can assure you it will. I am one of those people that have contacted Hampshire County Council, and I would agree with you that they have said to me they're not sure what the problem is because, as you quoted, they were quite happy with the assessment that they did. So we'll put it on the agenda and we'll thrash it out, I promise you. And you councillor Hughes. Thank you, sir.
Sorry Chair, sorry Chair, you say you're going to thrash me?
No, I wouldn't thrash you. We will thrash. Well, up to you. But no, sir, we will thrash the problem out, not you put in person. Sorry, sir.
Optimistic, optimistic.
Thank you so much. I am now conscious of the time, so I'm moving on to item eight. Progress report on West of Waterlooville MDA. Who's kicking us off on this, please? Anyone? No one? Anybody? Any questions then? Any comments, please? Steve, thank you, sir.
Only again to say, I'm not sure whether Jenny covered it in her previous, or in her previous item, or that she was.
Thanks, Steve. So if everybody's happy with what we've covered and there are no more questions, Jenny, did you wish to come in again on that?
Sorry, Angela. It's just a couple of items that people might want to be aware of with regards the development side of things. Just that with the health centre, the site area has been agreed. And the developer, Haven, are finalising and securing funding through the NHS, but we don't have any further news on that one. We've already covered things like the school and the land sales. The Elm Green play area is open. That's along the River Wellington, accessed through Elm Green or Phase Nine. And that was designed with Bearden Primary School pupils, and they chose a theme featuring boats and and quite a few of the items that are in there, like a zip wire and the swings and things. And there's also accessible play equipment in there. So it's open to everyone. We've had lots of positive feedback on the River Wellington works. We still have some signage and interpretation boards to be installed, but everyone seems to be really enjoying it, which is great. And we have a kingfisher in residence there now along the river on the western edge. And it's been spotted by quite a few people. So if you do want to go and have a wander, chances are good that you will see a flash of blue, which is brilliant. Our accessibility consultant we've hired to review the design codes and the whole of the site going forwards, namely the outside areas at this stage, he has been on site and he has sent us the first stage of his report, which is great. So we're hoping that we'll be able to follow his guidance and make lots of improvements across the site over time. We've, in discussions with Haven regarding the cemetery land, the proposed cemetery land. So they've moved forward in that Haven to have pretty much confirmed that, yes, they would like that cemetery land. It's now just with them to work out a business case because obviously there will be quite a few costs associated with that in terms of drainage because it's not, it's not a great land for burying people in, shall we say. As David already mentioned, Proxima Park, they're commencing building the next unit, and they've got a lot more tenants in situ. As with all of the house builders on our site, we do kind of keep an eye on them with regards to environmental requirements. So we have an engineer who specifically keeps an eye on those sort of things, makes sure that they are doing what they say they would be doing, you know, not putting silt in the river and all that and mud all over the roads and that kind of thing. And Proxima Park is no different. With regards to the next land sale, so we're hoping to crack on with that now and expect to have the next plot to market early next year. And of course, I'll keep you updated in terms of which ones those will be. The other thing that lots of people always ask about is the local centre. This is next on our agenda, basically. This is the next thing we will be looking at. There needs to be a bit of a redesign. But now that the areas for the health centre and the extra care have sort of been confirmed, we can start to move forward with that, which is brilliant. Yeah, so that's just an update there from me.
Brilliant. Thank you, Jenny. See, David has his hand raised. David?
Yes, thanks Jenny for, that was news to me as far as the cemetery was concerned because I believe the previous updates we've had indicated that Haven was unlikely to use the land. If they are going to go ahead to use it as a cemetery, does that mean that the issues that were raised originally for access? So that traffic going to the cemetery would not go along Purbrook Keith Road will be resolved by the changes to the Lady Bridge Roundabout and the Southern Access Road. And also that it means that the original intention, which was why Phase Two new gardens was built early to provide an access to the cemetery through there will also not be necessary. Since as far as I can see from the plans, access to the cemetery can be directly off the London Road through the new road being put there. Is that actually correct?
That's a really, really good question and one I'm afraid I cannot answer. I wouldn't want to answer in case I gave the wrong, the wrong answers. I'll have to get back to you on that one because I haven't looked at the specifics in terms of the plans. All I know is that Haven basically evaluated all the other sites and concluded that there was no else suitable. So, yeah.
Right, sorry. Just to assist this, I think the access to cemetery would come off the Southern Access Road. It would certainly not come off Purble Keith Road. One of the agreements way back a long time ago was that the Romans were quite content for there to be a cemetery bounding its rear boundary on the basis that the landscaping as such would keep it discreet. So I think we will not have the sight of seeing funeral cortages, et cetera, going along Purble Keith Road. I think it will come off the Southern Access Road. I think Jenny will check the plans at some point, but I think we can allay most of the fears there.
Thank you councillor Hughes.
Ninety percent sure that's right. Ninety-nine percent sure that's correct.
Thank you. Brilliant. So if there are no more questions, ladies and gentlemen, may I say then that that concludes the formal business for this meeting. And may I thank you members for your input. Many, many thanks and for officers this evening for attending this virtual meeting. And I hope perhaps next time, maybe we can meet in person. That would be great. But in the meantime, I send my sincere best wishes to you all. Take care and see you very soon, I hope. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you, Chair. Good night, everybody.
Bye. Bye bye.